Agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome everyone. So the first thing on our agenda today is our superintendent's update, so I will hand it over to Allison.
Great, we have some fun things to share with you right off the bat. First, I wanted to highlight that last week was the start of what I hope will be a new tradition in the Westboro Public Schools where our graduating senior class were able to visit our K-3 schools. So for most of our students graduating, this meant going back to their K-3, and for those who hadn't come out of our K-3 schools, they picked one and sort of joined in in the fun. So students came back, they marched through the school, they were greeted by crowds of cheering children, they got to see their old teachers, it was a really fun event. And Westboro TV made this great video, which I think we've got queued up here, of the Fails visit, so I wanted to share that with you, just because it's kind of a nice snapshot of what happened. It looks a little different in each schools, and I think the principals are comparing notes to decide what worked really well, so that they can kind of continue to do this in the future, but here you go. As I said, it looked a little different in each school site. There was a moment at Armstrong, I happen to be at Armstrong for this, where the principal said something about going on the roof, and I thought he was somehow suggesting that the entire senior class was going to go on the Armstrong roof, and I thought, no, we should not do that. He went up and took an aerial photo, so we have this great photo of all of them from above. And they got to spend some time on the playground and all that, so it was a really great, great event for everybody. Also, I wanted to do a quick run-through, and I know you are all aware of this, but just a quick update on summer projects.
Do you want me to first put on the...
I was gonna say that till later, is that okay?
That is fine.
That's a fun one.
I wasn't sure of timing.
I've gotta kind of keep the fun things interspersed with the less fun and exciting. Just as a reminder, Anita's here, who's kind of helping Kelly in terms of the coordination and oversight. Our first project, as you know, we're kind of the tail of the comet of the Hastings ADA project is happening here. It started last summer, will continue through this summer, including exterior work, doors, bathroom upgrades, cabinets, et cetera. And staff will still have access, and there'll still be some parking. The project did get off to something of a start, although it's been delayed during some of the break times. It is still expected to be completed on time. I know Yakub was over and did a walkthrough and got to see. And one thing just to note about this project, it really is about ADA compliance, so as much as it would be wonderful to have everything upgraded and spiffy, really we're just sort of meeting some compliance requirements that got kicked off by the roof project. But I think we're excited about getting that rolling just as soon as the kids are out of the door, so we can get moving on that project. The second is Gibbons Gym Floor, and as a reminder, this is the original gym floor from way back in 1956, and it is coming up to the very end of its useful life, a lot of dead spots, some gapping, and it's to the point where if they were to attempt to sand it down to do another roof finish, it's not really clear that they'd be able to have any wood to sand down. So that is going to get pulled up, and there will still again be access to Gibbons along that front side, even with this and the parking lot work going on, we believe there'll be access through the front door at the Gibbons School. And it's expected to start and complete by the end of the summer. It's a bigger project than you would think, because not only are they tackling the floor, they have to pull out the bleachers, pull out the divider, and deal with subfloor issues. So that's a big one. And then finally, just as a reminder, thanks to some remaining ARPA funds, we're able to do some paving work in the Armstrong and Gibbons parking lot. This is really designed with sort of safety and traffic flow in mind, but primarily safety and drainage issues. We're creating patches where there's ice and things like that, so this will very much help with that when it comes to winter time. And we're expecting that, again, to start right at the start of the summer, wrap up by the end. This one has impacted building use in the sense that these buildings tended to be used during the summer for programming, and we've relocated programming off-site in other schools in a lot of cases, or the community center is pulling some programming in there too to accommodate this. And we're looking forward to welcoming people back next year, but given the smell, the sound, the large machinery, it just didn't seem wise or safe to have a lot of programs running in and out of the buildings during this project in particular. So those are the three quick updates, and none of that should be new news to you, but I wanted to remind you that that's going on. One exciting bit of news is I have an intern this summer, a former Westboro student who's currently a Curry College student, who's going to be coming back and doing some hours both here and over at the town side, he's volunteering over there as well. And my particular project for him is really going to be focused on doing some documenting, some photography, and things related to some of the summer projects and summer maintenance work that go on, so that we can provide those updates to you throughout the summer, but also maybe put together a presentation and a website and things like that. So it's a way for him to learn a little bit about the type of work that goes on in schools. Oh, and he's here, hi! This is Ronald, the intern. I had no idea you were coming. Welcome. How exciting, I had no...this is very fortuitous. And it's a great way for us to sort of benefit from, you know, a smart young person who hopefully has some better tech skills than I do when it comes to putting together presentations, so I'm excited about that. Welcome. I wanted to, and this is just a quick note, I shared with you, we had talked about the timeline for evaluation, and my goal was to get you something in writing by next Monday, so I pushed through and got it to you today. So I shared with you a reflection, that's sort of a first step in terms of the evaluation process for the superintendent that we talked about last time. That end-of-year reflection, I've tried to link to the way the rubric is set up for evaluation purposes, and gives you kind of my thinking about how the year went, what went well, what I need to be working on and looking ahead to do. And in addition, by the end of this week, you'll get a copy of kind of a Google form, so it'll allow you a place to input your comments, your feedback, your ratings. The backend of that will be shared with Sarah as the chair, and then she can designate, either she gets the job of compiling everything, or she can designate someone to do it, so it'll be with Sarah and Lynn, and the two of them will work together on coordinating that. So you can expect to see that in email shortly. Once your information is compiled and then shared back with me at our next meeting, I'll have my marching orders going forward. So thank you again for, you know, your support and your trust and your encouragement, I really appreciate it, and I look forward to hearing from you. The next step on that, we have a donation. This is a wonderful donation for the Armstrong School. Principal McCann reached out to let us know that AIS, which is in Lemonster, had offered up some workstations and chairs to donate to the school. The grand total is actually, I'm doing the math on this in my head, not very effectively, $6,000 plus about, yeah, it's close to $10,000 in stuff. And I think these are going to be great useful items for staff in their classrooms. We do need your approval, so later in the evening tonight, that's on the action items, is approval of this donation, unless you want to knock that off the list right now, it's your call.
Do you guys want to go ahead and take care of that now?
Yes.
Just so it's taken care of, okay, so somebody wants to make a motion?
Motion to accept the donation to Armstrong.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero, zero. Okay, great.
And now, since we're speaking of Armstrong, I was gonna jam in the other thing that's not on the agenda, but a bit of late-breaking, nice news. So yesterday, was this just yesterday? Oh gosh, this week is compact. Yesterday during the day, we had this wonderful pilot program, our third graders from Armstrong walked over, and they participated in activities designed to kind of familiarize them with local history and build some civic awareness. So three stages were, first of all, a tour of the cemetery, and learning about the history in Westboro and history in the cemetery. They got to stop at the Historic Commission and learn about some of the artifacts and history there. And finally, they had a session in here with our own town moderator, John Arnold, ran a mock town meeting for our third graders, and they got to discuss and debate. And hot off the presses, you might be the first people to see this, Westboro TV put together a quick video that they made of the whole thing together, so that's probably even more informative than me talking. We'll let that one run for you. So a few thank-yous, I have to give some credit to the Historic Commission Chair, Christian Hedrick, whose office is on this floor, actually right over there, I think, and historian Chris Allen, who is part of the Historical Society, and they are part of the team that put this together. To John Arnold, of course, our town moderator, who really gave, you know, you saw the interactive part prior to that, he really sort of teed up, this is what town meeting is, this is how it works, this is how it kind of lives in relationship to our state and federal government, and hopefully kids remember that and are someday, you know, excellent participants in town meeting here. And then all the volunteers who participated at Memorial Cemetery, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention Tara, our social studies coordinator, who did a lot of work kind of pulling this together and piloting the program. So, you know, we'll continue to look at it and refine it, but we wanted to let you know it was an exciting, exciting day and a beautiful day to learn about a little local history and civics. And last but not least, I put on the agenda a link to the school handbooks with any noted revisions in them. And again, we're gonna vote this next time, so this just gives you a little time to look through, and I wanted to put that down for the record. I reached out to all the principals to say, do you want me to highlight anything that seems radically new or different? And across the board, they said, nothing really radically new or different is happening. The one exception, which may be added as a kind of add-on at the high school and middle school levels, is we're currently working with the AI Committee, and as part of that work, we may be creating a separate sign-off for students related to AI use, just a kind of set of guardrails around, you know, disclosure of use, being informed about what it is, making sure that they're checking in with teachers about when and how to use it, those kinds of things. So we're working that through right now, and it won't be included here yet, but we'll likely be coming back to share that with you in the not-too-distant future. So that's it for me, I think.
Okay, that's great. I did notice that, I think that anything that was changed was in red line, so we should be able to see that pretty clearly when you guys were reviewing it.
And if you have questions, you can either kind of relay them through me, or reach out just directly to the school principals and get information from them, I'd be happy to help with that.
Yes. Okay, so we have discussion items here. Do you have something to say about collective bargaining?
I do, I do have a couple of updates on both of these, too. So first of all, I just wanted to put on your radar that the time to start thinking about and planning for collective bargaining is coming up. I've had some initial contact with Michelle Fridley, who's the president of the Westwood Educators Association, the teachers' union. They have a team ready, and we've started to talk about dates and trying to get ourselves organized and ready to roll with that. As a reminder, we have quite a few bargaining units who are going to be in negotiations next year, so the teachers, our paraprofessionals, our administrative assistants, our custodians, our tutors, and food services are all due to renegotiate contracts next year. So there's plenty of work to go around if you have an interest in sitting in on those. And my final note, just before I turn it back to you, if you have anything you want to talk about on the topic, is to just say, my sense is we have wonderful employees here and a great tradition of a very kind of, you know, open and thoughtful and collaborative approach to bargaining, as a way to kind of problem solve and make sure folks are fairly compensated. And I'm very much looking forward to carrying that on. I think it's a hallmark of a really great district, so thank you for everybody who's been involved in the past, and for those of you who are about to join, thank you for that, too. I think it's good.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, and I'm gonna go ahead and let Steve also speak, I know that regarding that and his experiences, I know that he's been on the Teams for Collective Bargaining for quite a few years now, so if you want to add to that, Steve, that would be helpful.
Yeah, nearly all of them, but I guess my question is, are we going to follow the same format relative to the participation of the school committee in each one of the bargaining groups? Which Sarah would make the assignment of who does what and when. Some have two of us, some have had just one person with the other part of the negotiating team on our side. So I guess, excuse me, I'll wait and see how we put it forward, but I would suggest that if you look at the team participation from last time, that'd be a good model to make assignments.
Yeah, I mean, that's the plan, is that I'll assign, we have some situations here where some, you know, or folks may not be able to be on certain teams, and we'll just assign according to what we, what the best fit will be, and people's schedules, but I think that that is the best approach. So I think you'd agree, right? It's been a very collaborative effort, and we want to continue to keep that.
Yeah, I've always thought that our approach to negotiation is that in fact, it's compromise, always is a compromise. Nobody can get 100% of the position that they start with, in part because we can't afford to do that, and also in part because not everything is a requirement, some things are good to get, some things are not. I think the history of our negotiation for many years has borne fruit in the sense of the collaboration of teachers and other employees of the town, working with the school committee and the school department to accomplish the goals, which in our case is a good education for the kids in our school system. I think we saw in terms of the treatment of our bus drivers, who don't directly negotiate with the school committee, but certainly the school committee's influence during the discussions of contracts with the bus companies, worked out quite well for us, not so well for other towns. And I think it's indicative of the effort that the school committee, as a negotiating team, has brought forward, with the idea that our purpose on both sides is to educate our kids to the best we can and be fair across the board, not only to the teachers and the other employees, but also to the town in terms of what we give for what we get. And I'm hopeful that even though it's pretty much a new team here now, that we will be able to do that again, to the benefit of everybody who works in the town and for the services that we ask to be given for the town to our children. So I think with that, that's enough proselytizing, but certainly it's the way I feel, and I believe we've done well to do that in all the years that I've been involved with this. So.
Thank you so much for that, Steve. So that's on collective bargaining. I think Allison has a few things to share with us regarding looking at redistricting, so I'll let you take that.
Yeah, and I think in terms of the collective bargaining, once you have a sense of who would like to be involved in which group, and if you can, you and I can coordinate around that, and I will start to set some dates. And, you know, we have a similar structure on our side, where different members of the leadership team will be involved in different pieces of the bargaining puzzle. So one thing that might change a little bit is I'll be pulling some of the student services' leadership into bargaining for particularly the paraprofessionals and teachers, because I think the kind of, there are often topics or issues that come up around special education in bargaining, so I think it's important to have that kind of perspective there at the table as well. I think that's it on that. So on redistricting, redistricting is this sort of scary word, and I want to sort of ease people's minds, that what we're talking about is trying to make some adjustments because we have a population change that's happening in town, and not kind of a wholesale, throw everything out to the winds. So Daniel, if you don't mind clicking on that link up there, that would be great. Essentially, during the budget process, one of the things that we really came up with is looking at enrollment and at our K-3 enrollment, and as you can see from the chart, we've got this interesting thing happening, where there's kind of an overall decline that is happening with not much of a decline at all, actually at Armstrong, Armstrong's holding pretty steady in terms of its enrollment. Hastings is down a little, and Fails is trending down. The graphic version is particularly interesting because it includes a trend line, so you can kind of really see it, so in addition to some of the up and down. I do want to note those 2025 to 2026 numbers, those are as of today, so those could shift. So those are projected enrollment for the fall as of today. I do anticipate those numbers will climb before the end of the summer, they typically do, so we will see a little bit of a change there. But the reality is, you know, we reduced sections at Fails, and Fails is this beautiful new building, and having classrooms that aren't being used in a beautiful new building just plain doesn't make sense. So that's really the thinking behind some redrawing of the district boundaries. Now, that being said, the process we know is complex, because whenever you make changes to this, you have to consider not only kind of your current enrollment, but what is the enrollment going to look like, and how does it trend over time? And when we see change and we see volatility, when and how do we see that? Additionally, we want to consider traffic impact, whenever you move, who's getting bussed where, that can really have an impact, not only on the buses themselves and the children riding the buses, but sometimes on traffic patterns in the town. And finally, I think we want to be thoughtful about making sure that enrollment is sort of situated so that building use is really spread evenly, and kids in all three schools are getting kind of comparable experiences, right? So it's not like one school has all sorts of space and tiny little class sizes and another one doesn't, that's really the goal of this. So to that end, we have started looking for a consultant that does this work. There are people who do this very specific work. We've gotten some good recommendations from nearby districts, and we think it's going to come in at a pretty low price point. This isn't a massive, you have to go out to bid situation, it's more, you know, contacting some pre-approved vendors and getting some quotes from them and doing some comparative analysis. So I wanted to share with you that we're starting to do this work in earnest, that the goal would be to complete the study by the end of the summer, just to get that data from the consultant, and then bring it back with some options to consider, and that can really inform the budget process for next year, that's really important. So we're not looking to make changes to lines this year, it would really be looking ahead to the '26, '27 school year. In addition, we'll be careful to look at things like siblings, and how do we make this shift happen in a way that works for families to the best of our ability. We want to make sure we're not disrupting folks who we know have big attachments to their particular neighborhood schools, so we'll do our best to kind of find a pathway that keeps those things intact if we can. Anything else I'm missing here on this? So I wanted to reach out to sort of share with you, this is where we are, it's very early phases, we do know it's a topic that gets people anxious, so we wanted to start talking about it and kind of say, we're gonna take it slow and be thoughtful, but also to ask if there's a committee member that wants to be kind of a liaison to this project. The group that meets internally will include Anita and myself, it'll include our student services director, and also the three principals, and I don't know, anybody else, I think we've batted around a few ideas, that was mostly the team, but having a school committee member involved in some of that discussion would be great. We will be having some initial work that we do ourselves, likely a very initial meeting with the consultant that we hire, so that we can sort of set the stage for that person, and then they will be reporting back to that small group before we bring anything forward. So that's the scope of what we'd be asking for.
Okay, thanks for that update, Allison. Just want to say, so I will speak with the individual school committee members and see what everyone's appetite is for who would like to participate in this. I mean, I would, I'm happy to if somebody else does not want to take that on, but I'm also open to, you know, whoever would want to. I just want to say with regards to this, that like Allison began the conversation in the beginning, she stated that this is something that can cause anxiety, and I just want to make sure that everybody understands, this has been a long time coming, this is not something that just popped up and that, you know, this year, our new superintendent came along and said, we're doing this, this is something that has been in the works and it's been discussed at great length. It's very, you know, we want everyone to know and understand that it's being done with a lot of care and thought. There's going to be, again, engaging this consultant, we're engaging in that for this exact reason, to ensure that all of the steps are taken, to ensure that this is done with the most care and least impact, or negative impact, if, you know, we want to eliminate that to the best of our ability. So I just do want to make clear that this is not something that just showed up out of the blue, it's been discussed for several years, and I think it is really now time, and it's necessary if we see, we've had several folks come to the school committee and talk about some of the inequities in those schools, and just due to pure numbers, and I think this is going to really help to make that a better situation. So I just wanted to make that comment. Was there anything else, Allison, that you wanted to add to that?
Not for me, but if there are any other kind of thoughts or considerations from the committee, I mean, my job is to kind of get feedback from you and think about it as we're trying to hire a consultant.
I'm happy to open that up for a little bit of discussion if anybody has any comments.
I have one question, would this consultant or part of this effort also include like a long-term enrollment study?
It might, I think we'll have to look at this cost, scope, cost of that. I would hope that the person that we hire, the company that we hire, will take that into consideration and be able to look beyond, we do get some demographic information through NASDAQ, which I told you that sort of indicates a downward which I told you that sort of indicates a downward trend. That demographic information does not include any projected impact of development. So anybody we hire, we really need them to look carefully at kind of what's happening and popping in and around the area in terms of development as well. So.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one quick question. I understand that this might be something that the consultant takes on and has to answer. But I am curious, do we know in terms of the three schools, obviously, there is a pretty big range in terms of the smallest attendance and the largest? Is the intention for them, like, are the schools designed in a way or have the capacity that they theoretically should be equal amongst the three schools?
Generally, I believe that's true.
Generally speaking, yeah.
Yep. I mean, Fails obviously has empty classrooms based on the difference of roughly 80 kids over the last few years. And, you know.
Can you just restate what you said? I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Just if the intention, if, you know, obviously that we see here that Armstrong has a lot more students than Fails currently, and if that has always been the intention, that Armstrong is just slightly larger than Fails, and it historically has taken on a higher percentage than a third of the student population, or if this is just over time, this has become unaligned and that this is part of what we're doing is to try to make it a third for each elementary school.
I think it's more of the physics of the way it was done. When you have boundaries that, let's say, are the center of a street, okay, is the population in that given area that's dedicated for that school. And let's say there were some developments in there that created the bubble. On the other hand, if you think about the various areas of town that are district, if you will, that way. And so the kids that are in that physical area of town would then go to that school. Now, if you think about, let's say, the Fails end of town, you're probably peeking out in terms of the age of the population, the parent population in that area. And so the number of kids available within that specific district are not as much, say, as the expansion that happened in the Armstrong district. Redistricting might move a street within the district to another district in order to add more kids to that particular area. I mean, and that's the reason for the consultant is to do it fairly.
Right. I would also, I mean, add to that. I think Steve's talking from the historical perspective. I would think that there would not be such an intention that, you know, we're going to have empty classrooms sitting at Fails, right? So it just worked out that way, you know, to Steve's point that this is how the development happened, and this is how the lines were drawn. And now it's about sort of moving that back and making sure, you know, at some point it happens. And I do think that all districts go through this where they don't want to have to redistrict, right? So you kind of push it as long as you can. And I think we're at the point where it just, it has to be done.
I think you're asking a little bit about capacity too, and whether there's even, and it is, it does appear to be, from my perspective, relatively even capacity. I know Fails had to design enrollment up to 400 students. And I think the other, you know, Armstrong is almost at that right now. And Hastings is below, but all of them have somewhere right around there if you were to kind of max out where they are in terms of maximal use of space. I mean, it's important to note that a couple of the buildings were built at a time when we didn't have programming that was a space-intensive. So, you know, some of what's happened in our schools is even though enrollment's down, they feel very full because of how we're using space differently. So spreading out the population among the three schools allows us to really do a better job for everybody, I think. So that's, I think that's really the goal. And my hunch is they'll come out close to even, actually, at the end of the day.
Thank you. I would imagine the goal will be to have equal student-teacher ratio, right? That probably will be the goal.
Absolutely. That is important, too. We really do want to not see a situation where we have one school with larger class sizes persistently. There's going to be some up and down in that and some range just because population's weird like that. But I think if we, with just three schools, we should be able to even it out a little bit. Yeah.
I know we've had several people come before us to mention that there was some inequities around the L population specifically and the teacher, student-teacher ratio. And I think that there's been some adjustments made this year, for sure, where, and perhaps it was last year, Daniel, that some folks were moved, there was like some FTEs. I just don't remember, but up to Fails to kind of.
Man, I think there was some misinformation that was presented about, like, we had more FTEs at the school that had more Ls, or has not been shifting. But the question that was put on the table is why does this school have more Ls than other schools? And it's because they're neighborhood schools. So, and that school, that school has always had more staffing to accommodate the fact that they have a higher number of English-language learners.
And I was going to say, we've adjusted every year, whatever we needed to, in order to be fair in terms of teaching.
Right.
There's nothing new to the idea that we've reacted to it every year.
But generally speaking, the redistricting would not be.
I would say the goal of the redistricting is not going to be to upend neighborhoods in their entirety. That just doesn't seem, that would seem counterintuitive. And, you know, I do think we'll need to think about, you know, one of the things I mentioned is this sort of balance of permanent versus rental housing. You know, I'll be curious to see what the consultant has to say about that. Are there ways where having those two things kind of balance out in each of the schools kind of creates more stability in each school environment? I don't know. Those are questions that a consultant is well-versed to be able to answer. In terms of things like service provision, if we have a population of students who have a need, we can always move the staff around for that. That's an easy fix.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on that, Allison? Anyone else? Okay, great. So I guess we're moving on to citizens' requests. Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak? Okay, so we have two. So I guess we'll start with this lady over here, and then we'll go to you, Diane.
So just before we begin, we will remind everyone of the school committee policy regarding citizens' requests. You must be a resident of Westboro. Speakers are allowed to address the school committee about issues within the school committee's purview. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak to the school committee. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the presiding chair before or after the meeting. You are welcome to hand the chair additional comments in writing now or send them via email, and the chair will share them with the other school committee members. Public comment by residents at this meeting is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. Our role is to listen carefully to what you have to share with us tonight. Clapping, cheering, calling out, or any other noise stirring or following a speaker is not allowed. At the close of citizens' requests, school administrators may address what was shared by the speakers if they wish to do so. State your full name and street address. Speak directly into the microphone.
Hello. I'm a graduate of the class of 2023. I was born in Framingham, Massachusetts, and I was raised here in Westboro my entire life. I went to preschool at Knowledge Beginnings, then elementary school at Hastings. Fun fact, I was the principal's first class to teach when she first graduated. Later, I went to Mill Pond, where I'll never forget Mrs. Staples, the only African-American teacher in Westboro at the time. Then I went to high school, where it was bittersweet. Teachers like Mrs. Pelletier, Mrs. Lamatina, Mrs. Breeze, Mr. P. from Stars, Ms. Anita Salucci, the librarian, and Mrs. Stoker made the most positive impacts in my school life and of many other students. But there were some that made my experience bad because of their own stereotypes. I had a history teacher refer to immigrants as aliens. And when I expressed that concern to the principal, nothing was done. More times, Westboro High School let racism slide. Somebody vandalized a wall in the staircase near the gym with the N-word, and nothing was done. They weren't able to even find who it was. They couldn't even suspect who it was. And there's multiple cameras going down that hallway and in front of that staircase. They weren't able to do it, but they sure know and know how to punish everyone that is smoking in the bathrooms. There's this new rule. If you're in the bathroom and people are smoking, everyone's getting detention, even if you had no idea who did it. So if they can implement that rule in the bathroom, they should have implemented that rule in that staircase. Oh, and it gets better. One time, I went into the girls' bathroom, and then I find the words, "Make America White Again", "F the N-words", "F Muslims", "F Hispanics". The moment I saw this, I ran to the office and said, very mad, "When is this going to stop, and when will you do something?" The office had three other students in there for a different reason, and they all happened to be of Hispanic descent. And guess what they did about this? Nothing. My parents came to the U.S. back in 2000, leaving everything behind, their families, their material things. The moment that they came to America, they came to Westboro, and we have never left since. In those 25 years, my parents have had a clean record, not even a parking ticket. My mom is a house cleaner, and she cleans here in Westboro and many other towns. My dad works with glass and mirrors. With the 20 years that I have been in Westboro, neither me nor my parents feared ICE, till now. My parents are scared to go to work and get picked up and never return home. This is my biggest fear, because it's not just me at home, but also my 11-year-old brother. He's a fifth grader in Mill Pond. He plays football for Westboro and rec basketball. How can I break the news to my baby brother that our parents are gone? How do I sit him down and prepare for the worst? How do I explain to him that if ICE shows up at school or at the bus stop, that he has to call me as soon as possible and not my parents? My parents gave everything up so my brother and I could have the life that they never had. Why isn't this being talked about in schools? What is the plan if they show up at the bus stops or in school? There's a bulletin board in the high school that is next to the old bank that the high school used to have about all the different sexualities and their meanings. That is important to have in a school. But how about a bulletin board with some red cards? And what to do and what to say when you're being targeted and arrested by ICE? Why isn't this being talked about or taught? I know not all immigrants are here for the right reasons, but that doesn't mean we can just write them all off as bad. All communities have bad people. But that doesn't mean we just write them off without knowing who they are. ICE isn't checking to see if you have a record or if you have papers. They get you and take you straight to Plymouth. Westboro has a lot of immigrant families. Their kids are in our schools, and it is our job as a community to protect them and support them, just like we do with the LGBTQ+ community. The high school focuses so much on LGBTQ+ education and morals, and while it is important to highlight that, it tends to overshadow the racism students and even some teachers face in Westboro. This doesn't mean we should take the awareness away from LGBTQ issues, but we should try to shift some of this focus in protecting these high-risk students from ICE and racism. I've sat in a history class where a white boy said, "Immigrants steal our jobs." Guess what happened to him? When it comes to racism, a lot of faculty members get uncomfortable and stay quiet. People are scared of being separated from their families, being sent back to a country they did everything to get out because of safety and opportunities.
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
How much, how much longer do you have?
I just had one more sentence.
Okay, just finish up.
"I want to close off with racism or discrimination of any kind isn't normal, and it should not be normalized anywhere." That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So I know it's generally not a policy for us to comment. I am going to comment on this. I'm sorry you had to come here and read all this. I'm sorry about whatever you have experienced. I will say, you know, it sounds like you graduated in 2023, you said. So we're not privy, or most of us on this committee are not privy to any of those particular incidences. Our superintendent that we currently have is not, I would say, and I'm sure she would echo, that we have a zero-tolerance policy for such type of slurs and what it is that you may have seen on bathroom walls and hallways, et cetera. So I am sorry about that, but I don't know if Allison wants to say anything further on that.
I think I would only sort of say that the district leadership team here immediately in January, following executive orders, kind of put our heads together and talked very openly and began communicating out about our obligation to all of our students whose families come from other countries. What do we do? How do we do it? How do we kind of make sure that people feel safe and welcome here at school? And we're very committed to that, and we're going to keep that work up as best we can. I am fully aware of the, kind of the international feel of this town. I think it's a huge asset. It's something to be proud of. And I'm hopeful that by continuing to uphold that as a virtue and a strength of the town, we can appeal to people's better nature and do our best to look out for each other here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on down, Diane.
Diane McPherson, 32 Fisher Street. I was going to talk about our middle schoolers. I've sent you all an email. Kind of feel like that deserves the attention. I don't know if this is the same person who I'm going to be reading this from, but I read this on Facebook today. "Westboro Public Schools, where are you to support the family of immigrant students? I haven't heard a thing from them in a while. Students are scared, and parents are scared. There's been no letter or anything coming home about ICE, and it's not talked about to high-risk students." Our middle schoolers, I think we can come together to support in our downtown area. They want to share that space with us. Great ideas have been put out. I'm going to speak with Jen Kirkland soon. I wrote down, we have the Westboro Downtown Improvement Project public meeting, June 11th, 6:00 p.m., 7:30 to Fails. It's another great place to have, continue this conversation. I'm not looking for you guys to fix anything regarding our middle schoolers, but I would like you to join in the conversation. But yeah, ICE situation. Good luck. Thanks.
Thank you. The next item is school committee reports. I will start with Steve.
Nothing tonight.
Jane?
Yeah, just one quick report. I met with Allison today to talk about, I wanted to just ask a little bit about how the AI committee is going. And it sounds like there's a lot of really interesting work being done by that committee. So I wanted to thank both Allison and Daniel for being part of that committee and all of the committee members. Allison and Daniel for being part of that committee and all of the committee members. It's a huge undertaking, but so important. So thank you so much for all the work on that. And we look forward to the update, maybe next school year. Thanks.
Jacobe?
Nothing to report tonight.
Tim?
Sure. Nothing to report. I would just encourage the people who did provide public comment today just to stick around a little bit if they're interested in having a conversation after. We will be going into executive session, but after that, so, thank you.
I don't really have anything particular to report except that we have, high schoolers are graduating this week. I hope that we don't get too much rain. I know that the forecast is calling for rain, I'm sure. So what time are we scheduled? 5:00 p.m. I think is graduation, is that right? Right now, at least?
That is correct. I wait, I have a text. I reached out to Principal Callahan about what the rain, rain call plan. Hopefully, if we do need to shift the time a little bit in honor of the weather, that we'll make that call at Baccalaureate the night before. And my sense is that there's a real desire to keep it outdoors, if at all humanly possible, so we'll do our best. So in the meantime, if anybody has any influence over the weather, we use it, please.
Irrespective, it's going to be a great day for all of our graduates. Also, before it happens, a quick shout out and thank you to all of the parents and volunteers for Project Graduation. That is a huge, huge project that the parents and teachers that all are involved commit their time and have put this together for our students. And I think we really do owe them a thank you for that. I'm sure the students are looking forward to being able to attend that. So I have nothing else to report. Any other comments? If not, I guess we will be, we've already done our approve the donation memo and we do have an executive session on the agenda. So we will, if I can get a motion and to adjourn for executive session, and whoever reads would want to read the motion in its entirety as it's written.
I move that we adjourn to executive session to vote to meet an executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A. Purpose three, to discuss a strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares. And under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22G, two, purpose seven, to review approved executive session minutes from September 13, 24, January 8, 25, and January 30, 25, all executive sessions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion around that? All in favor?
Aye.
5-0-0. We are adjourned to executive session now. Unfortunately, everybody would need to leave and then.